So should we do the roll call and wait until his atomic clock says six? I think our clock back behind the audience show is six o'clock, so I think we'll go ahead and start the meeting. The first thing we have to do is a roll call. We'll go Val?
There.
And Scott?
Yep.
And Larry?
Here.
And Ross is absent. He's on a work-related trip. So notice of the meeting were, I think that they were displayed in three different locations, is that right? Zach? And the open meeting laws are behind the audience on the wall. The purpose of tonight's meeting was that Ross called before he left and he thought we should get together and talk about some of the things that are concerns with the reason, the area has been, the planning and zoning has recommended that we rezone, city-owned property in the forty-acre industrial tract. So that's what we're talking about. We're not going to vote on it tonight. We'll vote on it at the meeting on the 12th of this month. So we'll come back to that. We just had a lot of questions. And one of the questions was, the only contract that we have is the original signed contract with, on that property. And this, the way this came about historically, historically, I believe there were some that drove through town and saw the sign on the highway that said that we had lots for sale. And the person purchased lots for the future dollar stores, which most small communities of Nebraska now have. And it was brought to the council a few days after he drove through town and we were asked to look at it and think about approving it that night. And I said, I think we needed to take thirty days to look at it and study it. And I got a lot of, I remember I had a lot of people that said, why in the world do you need thirty days to think about it? And I said, so I could talk to other business people in the community, because my readings in newspapers across Iowa, Nebraska, South Dakota, are that if a dollar store comes in, it takes twenty to thirty percent of the business of a grocery store. And at that time, we were trying to maintain a grocery store in town. And I remember it was rather unpleasant thirty days later, because there were a lot of people at the council meeting, the place was packed, and all of them were against the fact that I wanted to take more time and why in the world didn't I want to take more time? And at that time, Lee, after I got told all kinds of things, I was sitting in Val's chair. And Lee started putting his hand up like this, and he said, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. And just so he wanted to interject the fact that the lease was very exclusive. Now, we signed a lease with other people out there, and the lease was a general lease where there were no exclusions, absolutely none. And yet, even after we took thirty days, we signed a lease with the dollar store property that we have all kinds of exclusions out there. And I think, looking back at it, I believe that I was, had made the right decision to at least wait thirty days. And we made the wrong decision in signing that lease, because we didn't know them anything. And dollar stores are all, there, almost every small town in the state has one, if they've got a property that's available to them. I'm saying that as a preface to the fact that we've still got a problem with the dollar store lease. And then it was brought to my attention that the only lease that we had on file was the original lease that Lee negotiated, minor law office negotiated with the dollar store. And in that lease, they removed things that we couldn't have, like a car wash couldn't be located in the whole forty acres. A motel could not be located in the whole forty acres. And we got some of those exclusions out of there. But Teresa and Lee have been trying to reach the people that own the property. And Teresa, in this, in this email to the...
It's the attorney for Dollar General.
Why don't you explain it from there on, because we still don't have a definitive answer as to whether we can have residential out there.
Here's the original lease, but you can see the language that we struck, got out of it. Car wash, different things that we negotiated out.
And I'll make the statement that we were stupid for signing that lease. We didn't sign it with, we didn't sign it with anybody else. There were no exclusions when, you know, when Farm Bureau and when Stan Mackley wanted his lease, we didn't exclude anything out there. So you can see, I think, why I'd like to take time on a lot of the issues that we discussed, because I think haste makes waste. And I'm not going to waste your time going all over all the things we've done in the last ten years where we've gotten in a hurry and we've caused the taxpayers a lot of money. But we've made a lot of mistakes that way. So now I'm going to let Lee explain where we're at as far as being able to have a residential area out there.
The present owner of the lot and the building is this Rag Clan, which is an LLC. The owners of that is, the contact person is Randall Block, who's a woman by the name of Randall, who lives in Cincinnati, Ohio. We contacted her about, there's a language that says you can't have living quarters, you know, within the industrial tract. So we wanted clarification, because it says any living quarters, sleeping apartments, or lodging rooms. So we contacted Ms. Block. She explained that she just owns, the Rag Clan just owns the property, but they lease it to Dollar General. So we had to, she directed our inquiries to Dollar General. We did not get a response from them. So Teresa went online and found the attorney online for Dollar General, who's a Mariah Mohary, who's in Tennessee. And we contacted her a couple of times by email. And she, the first time, she said she was out and not back in until today sometime. We tried calling her twice yesterday and then once today, and had to leave a voicemail and not heard back. So what we're waiting for is clarification on whether that living quarters would prohibit an apartment building. So if it does, then we're going to, they can waive that, or we can renegotiate, you know. If they can tell us that it doesn't, and we just proceed then, that it doesn't violate their restrictions. Or if they do, we can pursue the waiver, if they won't waive it, then we're stuck.
And when this was brought to my attention by one of the council members, I, I said I thought that we had negotiated with them earlier on the possible three-stories commercial and apartment building. And I thought that because I signed some checks for legal fees, and I thought that's what the legal fees were for. But we haven't got a record of any change, written record, and with, you don't have a copy of anything, nor do we have it in the city. So that's one reason for the meeting tonight, is to let everybody know that there is a little bit of a hitch, and it might be settled before the meeting a week from tonight, and it might not be. But that was a concern of some of the council members. And I'd like to let the council members discuss it. I've talked enough and see what their feelings are, because I know, and I'm going to preface this with the fact that we talked about this a bit. We didn't, we didn't, at our retreat, we had so much going on, we didn't even get to our goal, we didn't even get to our goals. We're going to have to do that maybe to regular meeting, because I think that's an important thing for us to do. But we've been working really hard trying to find a spot for an apartment building. And the work is still in process, is trying to find what ground might be available. And then if there is a ground available, who would help us buy it? You know, because we're, we're on a pretty tight budget this year. But regardless of that, at the meeting, I think Ross was the leader in the whole thing, just trying to ask us not to vote, but how do you feel about it? We can't find an alternative site. And at that time, I think the council members were kind of in agreement that if we can't find something else by the February meeting, that even though we don't think it's the best place, I think that that was expressed by every member, not the greatest place, but to do something that we were kind of leaning towards the fact that we would approve this for an apartment complex, or to change the zoning, which from there on, I think it would take on a life of its own. But saying that, that they, they're inclined to vote in favor of it, I'd like to also get some of the things that they feel like are concerns that they have. And we'll start with Val.
Well, I would think if anybody was going to invest in some property down there, and it wasn't cut and dried in black and white, that yes, they could do this according to the previous covenants. You know, would we be liable? We'd hate for somebody to start a project and then go, now you can't do it, because Dollar General says no. And then there we are in the middle, and you're going to say, well, the city, you told me to go ahead, so then we have to cover the expenses? I mean, I could see somebody suing the city if they dropped a wad and then the project was halted. That scares me big time. I think this has to be ironed out first.
Right, and I think we all kind of feel that. I mean, I think, even though we don't want to delay the whole thing, I think that that's something that would just become a sense that he would do that. Anything else, Val?
You know, originally, I, and I can't get past kids crossing the highway. I know that's silly, but I'm at that point in my life that that's a concern. You know, when I work with them every day, I worry about that. And you know that there will be families with kids in apartments. That's just more than likely. So that makes me nervous, but you know, we built bridges for other things, so.
Well, prior to Mr. Bijot Lee, he did agree, and I don't know where the school board would stand on this, to have a bus pickup and a drop-off there right on top of it, so.
And that would help.
Yep. So I think Mr. Lee would probably...
And the only other, the only other worry I have is, again, with kids. If you have kids in the apartment, they're going to be outside playing. I mean, hopefully, they're not inside playing all the time. And, you know, that's a big plant with a lot of chemicals down there. And I think they're concerned about that issue, and I think they would try to nullify that as much as possible. But whoa, that's scary as well. You know, it's going to be dusty. You know what, how many are left on a farm? You know, sometimes it's just dusty. The trucks are moving all the time, moving grain, moving everything. And you can live with your windows shut. Not saying you can't, but that's another issue. Okay, I'm done.
Sure? Scott?
I really don't have issues with it. I think we need to, we need to get going on something. Because we don't have any other land, because we don't have anything available, I feel this is the best spot for us. And we just, we need to get past this Dollar General thing, obviously, but I don't have anything against it. I'm ready to go with it.
Larry?
Well, first of all, this Dollar General thing, you know, I was on the council when we signed it back in January of 2015, and we should have researched it better, because it has caused a lot of problems. And I'm just surprised that a few months ago, we were going to put a three-story building out there, and this was never brought up or caught. We're on it now. For you new people, and we didn't negotiate this, you know, it should have been a fair contract for everybody. You know, competition is fair, but when you look at this, no. And I had a grocery store at that time, and that pretty much made my decision. It's time to figure out what I want to do in life. For this contract, we need to work on it. And for this apartment building out there, you know, I have a lot of questions tonight. You know, we're at the retreat. We've been studying ground for this purpose. And I'm to the point where if we can't find any, there's plenty of places in town that we could put it. But I respect the individuals that do not want to sell us land for one reason or the other, that's theirs. And I don't have anything to say about that, but we need to find a place. And if we can't find a place, we need to put it where we need to put it. And right now, the verdict's still out on a few of them, but it's out there. And I'm to the point now, guys, is, you know, we're talking lot three out there. There's two other lots out there. One is north, two is in the middle, and three is on Ninth Street. I'm to the point where, you know, CVA said, if this comes out there, they're going to put up a fence. So they're going to expense anyway to do this. I'm to the point now is, consider zoning these other two lots for the purpose of residential. Just because the fact is, we're having problems finding a place, and we're hearing it from the outside, is you got to have something ready to go. We'd have another lot, two lots, ready to go. And on that point is, once you put a apartment complex out there, you got people there already. You got people there already. What's another twenty people going to add to that area? That's my point is, because we don't have another lot. If somebody comes in two months from now, we don't have another lot ready to go. So that's what I'm looking at, is if we go with one, I'm in favor of going one, two, and three. Else, I don't think I want to go to the expense of just doing one. Because you're going to have a bus going out there every day picking up kids. They'd just as well pick another spot up. And that way, this situation would be covered, because the battle we're having finding lots for apartment complex, you go around and ask people if they would like to have a complex in their backyard, in their neighborhood in Wakefield. They would. And I don't think we got a good place to really have one, so. But that's where I'm at on those lots. You know, I got other questions on TIF projects and some for Tom to answer us. But I'm to the point is, if we can't find something in a couple of weeks, and if this Dollar General says cross it out, let's at least consider one, two, and three. Because to me, if we just do one lot, number three, to me, it's not worth the time.
And you and I attended the planning and zoning meeting, and that was brought up there. They, you know, so it isn't new, new to them, bad idea.
I think they were kind of in favor of it, you know, it's kind of like...
Doesn't mean they'll say yes.
That's what we talked about even way back in November, actually, but...
Yep.
So, yeah, I don't think we have, I don't think there's any issue. I missed the last meeting, it was that town, but I'm sure there was no issue. If we did one, we're kind of thinking the same way.
You'd have to go back to planning and zoning, have a public hearing.
Yeah, so rather than keep doing that, if we're really, to your point, we just thought too, it's just more expedient to just...
Well, I know Larry brought that up a couple of weeks ago, and I had, really hadn't even thought of it, but how do you, guys, how do you feel, Val?
Yeah, if we're, if we're taking this bite, then let's get the whole sandwich.
Scott?
Yeah, I agree one hundred percent.
Now Ross?
They're all three ready, they're all...
I talked to Ross yesterday, and Ross was opposed to that. Didn't say why, but he said that he was, that was something he would be opposed to.
Because some say appearance, but once you got one out there, you just as well look at two or three nice buildings. Because if it's good, it's got to be good for another one, in my book, so. That's the only thing I have to say about that, but I got other questions for the project.
Okay, but you're talking now about the, those are the feelings that you have, that you've got, not some questions, but you've got some reservations about your, your school kids and safety and those kinds of things. And Scott, you didn't really have any, and Larry has expressed his interest in doing one, two, and three, and also some reservations about putting it out there. But we can't, and it's hard, it's, we've been, Larry and I have spent a lot of time, he's been in the hospital and so have I, so we haven't been much here lately, but we've got a list of people that we're talking about as far as trying to find some property. The question then is, I guess my biggest question is, Zach gave me a check to sign that was for nearly $800,000 the other day. It was a non-budgeted item. And on top of the $800,000, we also had the moving of the electrical line on the Dyke project and taking out trees. And Michael's Foods Incorporated was, through Brady, got it, that would be at least, and have to buy the property where the new location would be. But that's a huge project to put upon us. And we've got a new filter plant that Jim's going to look at one that's similar to the one that our engineers are suggesting this next, next week or next month, is that?
Later this month.
Later this month. But we've got some really important things that we need to get busy on. And we've been spending a lot of our time checking to see with property owners, as to whether they've got any property for sale. And most of them don't have, they have property, but they don't want to sell it. And we've found a couple that have property that would, that would be willing to sell it. But the question that I have is, who's going to buy it? Because if I look at cities across the state, there aren't very many of them that are buying property. And we've bought a lot of property. We invest a lot of money, and we've got a lot of nice homes on South Main Street with two developmental properties. We bought property and got a street that goes to the highway, so that Main Street doesn't have to worry about going up and then all that traffic coming back down Main Street, they can actually access the highway. So we've been probably more active than most councils would be. And yet, we get dubbed as non-progressive council members, I guess. But what I'm telling you is that we don't have funding to buy a big piece of property right now. And I don't see that that's, that is going to change in this year's budget, or maybe probably even next year's budget. Because we're a small community. Our treasury is not very big. And when we write a check for nearly $800,000, which is the one that I signed, we have to think, you know, that kind of tells me that, if that was a check that I wrote on our own account, first of all, it would bounce. But I would really have any reservations about going out and buying anything new after that for a long time. And so even though I don't deal with large-scale economics in my life, I haven't ever, ever dealt with it, $20,000 is a big deal to me. But I think that we have those reservations, and I would ask that the city, the people in the community be a little bit aware of that. And my experience is that the more we do, and maybe this is human nature, the more people come back and expect us to do it again and again and again. And most of it, people, the things that people want us to do are things that cost a lot of money. And we don't have as, I mean, our treasury isn't nearly the size of the Wakefield Community Schools. And yet, they're going to be able to access funds that were meant for the municipality, and maybe now meant for them this year, I don't know. And we're going to possibly have a new, you know, our track and football field ready to go. But at the same time, we've been trying to get monies for a shelter house for ten years. We finally took the old shelter house out. The deal was, that one's not going out until we get money to replace it. And it finally got to the point that they just took the old one out, and there's no, there's nobody even thinking about replacing it. We've got a restroom and a concession stand at the park, that the softball, the people that run the concessions have been complaining about it for about twenty years, that it's too small, has no storage space. And we've got a sewer line that services that, that in the busiest times, it erupts into raw sewage out on the backside of that building, which isn't real pleasant for purchasing concessions. And we don't have, we haven't made any getting on that at all. I mentioned it when I had a visit with Megan about that those are things that the city could really use. Maybe they can tie that into the plan for building a new track for the football field. But we need a new sewage line, a sewer line down there if we are going to make that work. But when you got the Midsummer Classic with people from all over the state there, and then you got the raw sewage sitting back there, I think that that is at least alarming to me, where something should be done. But yet, we're not talking about money for that, because we're trying to spend money on a lot of other issues that most cities let somebody else do. But if we do find a nice piece of property, and there's one that might be available with a little bit of persuasion, that, but I don't think that that is a responsibility of the city taxpayers alone. We've got a big project with a street project, which I'm really happy about, because people that have been lifelong residents are going to get a better street. They're going to be a nice street, hopefully placed between Main Street and Winter Street, where Sheila Baxter, Sheila used to live, where the Park Brothers lived, all the way to where Gary, Gary and Barbara Preston lived. And those are things that the city is really, I think, responsible for. Purchasing ground for somebody else's expansion, as much as I'd love to do it, I don't think our city budget can afford to keep doing it. So I wanted to be clear on that. And if you guys think likewise, you, council people, you probably need to get a new mayor, because I think that we have got to at some point in time say, we haven't got the money. And if that's being outlined, then I'm outlined. And then the other thing that I feel, I think if we do build an apartment out there, we better make sure that it's going to be a nice complex, going to be well-maintained, the grounds are going to be attractive, so that when you drive by on the highway, you're going to look at that, and you're going to say, that fits in real nicely. It's beautiful, that's what we want. But if we're going to go the opposite direction and try to cut costs and not have a lawn, and not have trees, then I would say, hey, we need to look at something else maybe. And I hope that the people in the community agree to that also. Because it is going to be a trendsetter, and like Larry says, there are three lots out there. Now, I don't know, I'm going to ask Jim his opinion on the three lots, because I know Jim was the person that really started that forty-acre project, along with Terry, you were on the council then, Gerald, you were on the council then. But what are your feelings about three lots for apartments?
I don't disagree with it. I think we need to, you know, I think P&amp;Z was probably up to making those changes. What I would suggest, though, the difference between that first lot, though, is the one what we're looking at, only as a, as a motel would be, because zone that as C1. C2, which would give multi-family housing for that, it's fine, but C2 is restrictive in living while hotel motel in that area. So you could zone the second one a C2, and the next one a C1, maybe.
Is that, is that something that we would have to get approved by the...
Planning and zoning would take care of that first, and the trees would help.
I'm talking about Dollar General's, a different topic with Dollar General's and the motel motel.
Dollar General allows the motel.
They do.
Yeah, that's not restricted.
It was, it was restricted to the initial lease if we would have signed that one.
Okay.
Thank goodness we didn't.
So the issue is, C2 is fine for the multi-families and stuff, but it doesn't give us an opportunity for the motel hotel. So I, I would recommend C1 there and C2, and then you would have a lot of flexibility in those.
But Larry's right, this would be a little area that would be for, where people can sleep and spend the night, whether it be an apartment or a good-to-sleeping motel. But we're not going to reserve this, we're going to not reserve this for motel, but if somebody wants to build apartments there, they can build apartments there?
That's our guess, it's up to the council to go make that decision.
Whoever comes first, if it's not a, you know, we talked about reserving two lots at a retreat meeting for a city project down the road, right?
Further south.
To me, that's the only one that we need to reserve, because that's a city project. Motel, to me, is not a city project, but...
But if we rezoned it now, C2, and then a motel wanted to come in, it wouldn't be really hard to adjust that. Am I doing it the right way?
No, you'd just have to go through the other P&amp;Z rezoning, public hearing and stuff.
No, but is it, is it likely, you think, the motel? I'm looking, looking at Megan, who, she, you, you don't know.
Depends on if we do the study.
I don't know yet.
I think it's out there, but I think it's possible, but I think it's going to be an uphill climb.
And we can't do both, Teresa? Can't say C1 or C2? No, you got a good point.
Well, we could always see it, Jim, as well.
You can, yeah, okay.
Teresa's right in scheduling these here, so.
Quite an expert.
Yeah. Are there any other questions or any statements that you want to make as far as this property, Larry? Is there anything else? You were concerned one time about parking on the street.
Right, that's, I got some things here if we can talk about it, you know, what a TIF project is. I need to, I think the new people need to explain just the basics for what a TIF is, and the gains for the city with a TIF project, and the losses for the city for a TIF project. And what are we talking about, the city's responsibilities for this project out there with the apartment? And maybe developers' responsibilities? And then I have concern about, I would like to see Tom's plan for his layout of the lot, for his parking, because that street out there, you know, we've heard from CVA, they like to have it an open street. And I think it's very important that we make sure that we keep it as an open street both ways, because of that project. You know, someday that we're reserving those lots for the city, it would be very important that that street is wide open. So I think that we need to plan for that street, to have it, no parking on both sides, just because, you know, of the project.
So you would have no parking on either side there?
Nope, because I think that street would need to be open.
That's Cottonwood Street.
Right, because of CVA parking, and then, you know, if we ever develop that other lot out there.
So at this time, though, we'd still allow trucks to come in?
Well, at this time, we would, because we don't have any place to put the trucks, but we're going to have...
Or we don't have anything out there that would require, right now, I mean, you don't have any, you still have the CVA traffic. Which, there's quite a bit, quite a few trucks that go that route.
But I think it needs to be planned that this street, Cottonwood, would be a no-parking street. So it's something for the developers to say.
From Ninth North, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, just because of the project that may go out there, you don't want cars parked on the street, because you got to have two-way traffic going both ways.
And these questions that came up, I think the reason... And these questions that came up, I think the reason we wanna talk about it tonight and talk to Tom also about it and let him respond here in a little bit. Is because once we sign that lease, it's out of our hands. The control of that lot is out of our hands. And I think we're trying to be proactive as far as trying, you know, prevent some issues that could come up down the road.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, you keep talking about a lease, you're gonna sell the lot, right?
Or what do you? No, we're gonna sell the lot, but I, once we sell the lot, it's out, we, we don't have any control over it.
I'm not signing the leases, right?
That's why I'm just clarifying, yeah.
I use the law lightly, sorry. Uh, but before we talk, we open this up to ask questions from Tom, cause Tom's, I, we didn't think you were gonna be able to make it and I am glad you're here. Uh, but Larry had a question about tax increment financing and I can answer that in a few words, but I'll let Jim answer because he's probably the one that was instrumental in getting it here. Uh, first of all, our tax increment financing, the current process has existed since what year? What year was the CRA formed, do you guys know?
Just a few years ago.
Lowell Johnson was in the news.
Actually, a long time ago.
But that's a long time ago. But then we eliminated it.
Well, we didn't have a CRA to do it, we just did it ourselves.
No, there was, there's been a CRA.
There might have been a CRA, but it was, yeah, it was inactive.
Been active.
It was just a shadow thing.
I would say whenever they built those duplexes back in the mid eighties.
But then we went inactive and Jim, well, you had a, you had one of your retreats and the whole sole purpose of the retreat was to give us some information about tax increment financing. And then the council, I was in the council and we approved it. And at that time, Jim had told us that it was going to be used only if there was a, a project that would be a benefit to the, to the community. To the, like this clinic, for example, would be a good example of the, a project that benefits the entire community. And also said that we're gonna be very conservative, whatever conservative means now. It's hard in this day and age to say that we've got a political party that's conservative, uh, with the budget that we have and the number of dollars been spent, but beyond that, and the debt that we have. But beyond that, Jim said there might be one or two projects a year. But it went from that to where we've opened it up and evidently legally, we have to open it up to everybody that comes into town. How did you control it then if you had it, but you just thought it was inactive?
We just didn't do it.
You just didn't do it?
I mean, Dollar General was the perfect example in those days, because about the same time we, they built here, they also built in Wayne. Okay, I won't mention any names, but Wayne, once they started it, every project that got built in Wayne tiffed it. Because they all knew Wayne was gonna do it. And so Dollar General Wayne, the new one got tiffed, they didn't even ask for it here because we weren't doing TIF at that point.
And that's, that's a question that I had of you, Terry and Jim. It seems like that the council isn't offering that to everybody, because we would like to do what Jim told us when we approved it. It was gonna be conservative, we were gonna use it maybe once or twice a year, it was gonna be projects that benefited the entire community. And how did we go from that to what we have now where everybody that walks in the door is automatically offered a TIF, tax increment finance? So that's a question that I have for council members and for Jim, and maybe we'll talk about that at the, the meeting in a week from now, but think about that one.
Well, yeah, m- m- just to add to that, I, you know, I'm not a big TIF person, you know that.
I know you're against.
Yeah, I, but TIF does have a place in your toolkit for recruiting businesses and opportunities. There is a place. The problem I have, that I've argued about even in some of the ones we've done the last couple of years is there's no needs requirement in the state law.
You don't have to do it, offer it.
Well, no, I mean, there's not a need to prove that, that the project needs TIF to be viable. That's, that's what I'm saying when I talk about needs, so did the clinic, I don't care whether Ross is here or not, did the clinic need to have TIF to be viable? Hell no. Did Lyle need it really? He's one of my good friends, but hell no, he didn't need it. And, but see, nobody, but now, this project, I think, needs it.
To get that for the record, what Lyle was, was it Lyle Lake?
And, and that's, that's my only point, so when I say I'm against it, but I'm only against it, I'm for it if it's the right project. Or if you're, you know, if you're in a competitive situation trying to buy, to bring in an industry or a company or a something, and you need it, cause every other town's gonna offer those kinds of incentives. Then you need to have that in your toolkit. But to just give it away willy-nilly, I, no, I'm not for that.
Like we've given it to everybody that's out, I mean, didn't we give it to the new, uh?
Yeah, we've done two projects, Paul, and that's clinic and that.
How about the new garage out there, the one that's, he's not gonna get anything from TIF?
No.
Yeah, that's, that's the only two I was aware of anyway, but. So that's why, I mean, I think you just have.
Well, that's good, because I'd like, I didn't know if we could say no or not. Then who, who approves whether we offer TIF or not? Shouldn't that be the city council, should get, should have some approval of that?
That's right.
It's a CRA.
CRA, the, the application is submitted to the CRA and then, and they approve it, but if it changes our redevelopment plan, then it's, then it has. If, if the project is a, an amendment to our redevelopment plan, then it does have to go to the city council.
But otherwise, it doesn't go to the city council. So the city council has no control over this TIF. The TIF is controlled by the CRA.
I think that, uh, Tom Houston's firm is pretty conservative about, um, the dollars that are tiffed and they're pretty conservative about whether or not it's a new redevelopment project or within our redevelopment plan. So, um, the, 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 the two that we've had already, Lyle's and the clinic, have all been approved by the city council as amendments to our current plan. I don't really, I don't exactly know what this one will, will be, if it, if it's gonna, will be an amendment or not.
Have you voted, as presumed that way, that they were TIF projects and we accepted the TIF?
I can't remember.
That's good to know though.
Okay, like for me, explain to me in a nutshell what TIF is. I know it's less money, the, the ta- it has to do with collecting the taxes that normally would go to the city, to the school, right?
Service unit, all those.
Okay, it's, you, you collect that money and they do not have to pay it for a certain amount of time, correct? No?
It's money that comes in that is used for their project instead of going to the local governments, but it, it's a ten or fifteen year TIF, right? It could be ten or fifteen.
It can be any number of years.
And then it goes on the ta- the, it stays, it's on the tax rolls, but it goes to, back to them to do parking lots, uh, facades, those types of things, is that how you understand?
I think it's supposed to be some things, a certain things.
There's improved, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so what happens is you buy their piece of property, right, and, and it's taxed, say, at five hundred dollars a year, just for purposes of using a figure. And then you build improvements on that. And now it's a tax valuation, you know, now, now it, that now you pay taxes on it of, say, twenty-five hundred dollars. And, and because of the improvements and the development on the lot, the developer captures the difference between the bare lot taxes and the increase in taxes. Yes, of two thousand, okay, and they, they basically use that money for the dev- for development purposes. Okay, so they have to pay the tax and it comes back to the city and it's, then it's sent to whatever lender or whatever, um, loaned them the money for, for the project. So they are paying the taxes, but the increment, the, the five hundred dollars stays with all your political subdivisions, but the increment above. Outgoes to pay for, for the project. And, and for the, whatever number of years that it's tiffed, then your political subdivisions don't get that increase.
I think this time I understand.
The first year that I was at the League of Municipalities, the main, one of the main topics was tax increment financing and it was under fire from the legislators, a lot of them. And that they had investigated, a lot of the communities weren't keeping good records of the dollars spent. And there were senators that wanted to do away with it, uh, calling it, you know, whatever they called it, but they. I think it's really important that we do a great job of accounting for the dollars that come in and the ones that go out, because the legislature has talked, did talk that year. And that's not been that long ago about pinning it back and putting more strong, more stringent guidelines on the accounting especially for TIF.
They have done that.
But my experience was that most, most of us don't know, understand it totally, and I think that maybe you guys have a pretty good handle on it, Gerald.
Um, just FYI, and you're gonna see this in your, in your council notes when you get them. On the twenty-second of February, the CRA is having a retreat. It's gonna be down at Civic Center and we're gonna have a gentleman from Grand Island, who's worked around TIF for a lot of years, he's not under attorney. He's, he's a Grand Island, he's with their economic development group down there. And basically, he's gonna put on a TIF one-on-one.
It's gonna be good for us to be attended.
So FYI, it's a public meeting, you can come.
What day is it?
Twenty-second of February, it's a Saturday. So.
It'd be good.
It'll probably take about an hour, uh, you know, at, of that portion of it.
The only thing that I would add to what you would suggest, Paul, is every time, based on the world herald, that's what I read consistently, is if a legislator brings up an issue and wants to put in more guardrails on it. That poor soul gets bludgeoned by the League of Municipalities, the economic developers, the lobbyists just consuming and nothing happens. They've tried to, there's been, I don't know which legislator it is, but they've been, they've had, introduced some bills or talked about interesting bills several years about. Just putting a few more guardrails or more requirements on it and boy, if you do that, that poor guy or person, they just get beat ups to no end and then it just disappears.
But the legislators had some good examples of communities that they, and they actually were doing an audit on some of them and they didn't have any records hardly at all.
I think, rule of thumb today is if you're doing a TIF project, you're gonna get an audit. And they've changed the rules and they added some safeguards to it.
I mean, I didn't realize that.
But you don't lobbyists that are gonna, like, go after us? That's good, I, I understand that.
Ten AM?
Ten o'clock.
Ten AM that Saturday morning.
Well, I, is anybody else anything to talk about before we ask, start asking Tom some?
Yeah, I, I have a couple more.
Okay.
On, on a TIF project, what are some gains for the city, Jim?
Well, an investment of, uh, you know, I, and I threw those numbers out there on that board there, I said, if, if Tom puts in, uh, two complexes and he builds. And invest nine hundred thousand dollars, um, you know, there's some tax dollars, there's some utility sales to us and there's an economic development impact. For each unit and we took some of the units here in town and looked at the utilities and other stuff and, and figured for each apartment that would get built. There's roughly seventeen hundred and fifty dollars of, of utilities per year, per apartment. That's not a complex, but that's per unit. Those are rough numbers, I understand. You know, there's property tax, uh, valuations going up and of course, uh, the thing that we cannot figure out. And put numbers to is what does it mean when you bring a family of four or five to town? They're in the school system, the husband and wife works, they're buying items in, in this community. We don't know what those impacts are, but we know that there's significant dollars per family. So if he was to build twenty units, he could multiply that number out and add, um, X number of dollars to it. Because we're gonna benefit from, uh, having more families.
But our, a, a unit, you're gonna have five thousand dollars a year property taxes on one unit in your apartment complex?
No, that, that's what if he would build, uh, the units at approximate value of nine hundred thousand dollars.
But the property taxes on that would not be more than five thousand dollars?
Depends on what they assess it at.
That's right. I use, I use some rough numbers. That, and that's, that's city property tax, that's not, that's not the whole picture of the school and the ESU, fire departments now. That would be the benefit to the city.
Let's be safe, if he's only at five thousand, I'm in big trouble.
Well, if a part, if one of the apartments is five thousand, that, they'd be in big trouble, I think, because it would be more like, what, for each, what would each apartment be? Two thousand?
Well, I, I do it on the TIF bond thing, I can kinda go through a little bit, you know, on the ones we've done and, uh, you know, the, the process works fairly well. And what it does, it allows you to build a new building in Wakefield and the rents aren't as high, because you have the TIF bond help to pay for the lot and the infrastructure and the sewer line, water line, the parking. And so rather than the rent being seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, it's six hundred and fifty, because you've got the TIF bond help to pay part of the cost. And generally, I buy the TIF bond, so we're not worried about, you know, some other lender not getting paid or whatever, you know. I get the TIF bond and then the money comes back to me and if it doesn't amortize all of it, that's my risk. Of the, uh, you know, not getting the tax dollars for the school or the city for fifteen years, you know, right now, you're not getting the increased value. Cause it's just a vacant lot and the city owns it, you're probably getting zero taxes, you know, but, you know, fifteen years is supposed to buy it pretty quick, you know, and then that revenue comes into the community. Fifteen years is generally what I see on the TIF bonds for the timeline, it's just a present value of the increased tax revenue for fifteen years. You know, that's what amortizes that bond and the attorneys, they have a real good list of what are eligible costs. And I agree with Jim, most all of them get audited and so we have a check for every, you know, when I write a check to buy the lot, that's one of the costs that's eligible. And we just make a three-way binder and put them in there, so then when there's a question, it's not a subjective thing. I mean, it's just, you have a check and an invoice for everything that qualified for the bond. And, uh, the bond is just to help just get the development done. But in the purchase agreement that I originally had with the city, you know, to buy the lot and do the project, that is one of the things we need to do, is the TIF bond. If the city doesn't wanna do the TIF bond, I think the CRA generally, it doesn't really cost the city anything to do it. I mean, as far, it's not, you're not paying for anything. Or in the past, I've paid the attorney to do it and I'm assuming that's how it is in Wakefield. I mean, whatever their bill is, you know, I end up paying that as a developer, so there's no cost to the city and we start developing stuff. You know, tonight, one of the things I had a goal is, I wanna answer your questions, but I, I wanna clarify, you know, we're gonna plan to build two buildings on that lot.
Twelve and an eight, is that what it is?
Right, you know, and I got a picture and I brought it to several meetings, if anybody wants to look at that, we pass it around. You know, this is the apex and the twelve plex would just be, you know, four more units on the end. But the, uh, you know, we build eight the first year and get them full and then we decide, you know, if there's still as much demand as there appears to be, then the next year we build the second one. And, uh, I have not had the architect do a site plan until we kinda get the zoning change. You know, we've been working on this since late August, early September, you know, and, uh, I just don't really wanna spend more money if, uh, we don't have an appetite to change the zoning. You know, because I, you know, there's no benefit on that. But essentially, you know, roughly, we put one building on the east side of the lot, going north and south, and another building on the west side with the parking in between. Um, the lot is plenty large, you know, to have parking in the middle. I mean, we're not gonna park anything on the street, but if you're gonna say no parking, then you probably need to find a new place for the truck that's always there when I come to look.
That is a new place for trucks.
Okay, no, but I mean, you're, you're blocking the street, there's usually a truck parked there when I come to look at the lot. And so I, we don't plan to have anybody parked on the street. Parking would be on, on the property.
Well, and our code, our building code requires, what, is it two s- two spots for?
Per unit. Two per unit.
We would build one parking spot for every bedroom, you know, and so that if people only have one car, then you have an extra one, but it's, I think it's foolish to not have a parking spot for each bedroom.
And, and that's good to hear, but we, we have had problems with one of the apartments by, uh, Smith Munderloam Funeral Home. Have, have complaints where they, they will, the whoever's childcare, whatever, or they're carrying their groceries, they'll block the alley. And sometimes they, they'll go in and visit with somebody and the alley will be parked with a running car for half an hour or forty-five minutes and there's people that use that alley. And they have to get to work and the alley is blocked, so we've had, I've had a number of times where I've been called personally to say, why are they allowing them to block the alley there? So I think that parking is, is a legitimate, uh, thing that could come up later on with, with council if, if the parking is on the street. But we can eliminate that with no parking, that wouldn't bother you at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
No, no bar, the parking for the apartments is gonna be on my property.
All right.
And so if you put, pass the ordinance, no parking on the side of the street, uh, that, that works fine with what we're planning to do. As far as, uh, you know, building the two buildings, uh, the TIF bond generally takes two and a half to three months from the time we start. And so, you know, I, I've kind of been pressing to get started and, you know, so now we're first part of February, you're into the first part of May. They won't allow us to do any construction until the TIF bond is complete. So that, you know, if we're thinking about when you wanna start, you know, it's three months from when we pass this. You know, I can't, again, we're not gonna hire the attorneys to start doing it and incur all that cost if we don't get the zoning changed. And I, I don't wanna muddy up, uh, the project, I'm probably biased if, if you can pass this one, if later on you wanna do something with the other two. But if you have to go back to planning and zoning and republish again, you, you push it all out?
No, I think we would be, we're looking at this one a lot next week, next Wednesday night. And I think that there's a lot of, a lot of people that are in favor of it. Tom, it's just whether or not we can get the paperwork on the lease or on the, uh, dollar store with the exclusions. So we know that it's absolutely right for us to build. So we know that it's absolutely right for us to build a residential out there.
I think the original estimate was right at five hundred and fifty thousand for the eight-plex. You know, the twelve-plex would be a little bit more, uh, but we gained some benefit, you know, just having one building versus, so it wouldn't, it'd be a little over a million. But, uh, again, we had estimates, you know, from one yard and the plumbers and all those, and I just haven't really updated them. You know, Meyer would move the dirt. You know, he's gonna come by Friday and give me a rough estimate, but, uh, again, uh, you know, I can only have people do stuff for free for so long, you know, they want paid. And, uh, you know, I can't have them keep doing stuff for me with the idea we might do it. And so I kinda working to pass that. But, uh, as far as aesthetically what you want on the buildings or what people are expecting, uh, we try and keep the buildings affordable. You know, if you're gonna have people, uh, you know, six hundred, six hundred and fifty a month, uh, if that works in their budget, um, you know. But if you, we can put some brick on the buildings and take the decks off, you know, to try and if people want, uh, I've been cautious about the decks just because, you know, there's one lawsuit over in Wayne right now where somebody fell off the deck and got hurt bad, and now they're suing the owner. You know, there's other things, uh, you know, we take the decks off if you want brick on the corners or on the front or something, you know, we can do that. Like in the picture you have up there, you know, we put brick on the corner, this is one of the, when we got the TIF bond, they put that in there that we should put brick on the corners of the apartment buildings. And so that is the, uh, And this building, on the picture you looked at, we are putting the stairs in a breezeway. Some people don't like the front, uh, yeah, so then they don't like the steps on the front, so we're gonna put a breezeway, and I know we'll have to clean the snow out. And, uh, but it will be all covered in a breezeway versus, uh, you know, out like this.
Just, just for the record, P and Z, we, we specifically asked Tom to not do his outdoor stairs, and he said he had a, the interior version.
Yeah, and that's what's on the picture if you wanna pass it around, and so, uh,
Is it interior version?
Yeah, it's a breezeway with the steps inside.
The stairs, I'm looking at, we're on Tom's general. And, uh, my wife draw these plans up for Tom, and, uh, that's been the major complaint. These are for college kids, and I said, these are gonna be for families, we need to make these a little better quality apartments than what we build for college kids. Hopefully, they take care of them better. And, uh, that's why we put, and I seen a lot of these, uh, we went through Kansas City. This design, there's a whole, I don't know how many blocks, of the same thing down in Kansas City. And we just come back from, uh, Houston, and we come through Dallas, and there's a bunch of them in Dallas, same design. I don't know where my wife stole that from. But, uh, it works good, uh, to, they look good, I, I think, but, uh, it breaks up the rust line, so you don't have a big, wrong rust line too. It breaks that up, so, uh,
In, in the twelve-plex, do you do another, a, a second breezeway then?
Yep.
Yeah, and the, the one we have on the eight-plex has two breezeways, and the one with the twelve, we have, just have three.
Three, okay.
You put, you actually put it right between the two apartments.
So you get some spacing between the apartments that we do, right?
Right, right. That helps on the, as far as the fire code regulations and everything else, it just helps on that too.
And the buildings, as they get longer, you know, we're, we're proposing we stair-step them, so we'll do the first four, you know, and then come down two feet. That lot kinda slopes from the south down to the north, and then that way you don't have a hun, a building that's a hundred and sixty-five feet long, you know. It, it would look better, you know, it looks like different units because you come down two feet, and it makes a little more work for Lou. But it, it does give it aesthetically, it looks better because you don't have just one straight, straight long building. And, uh, that's, you know, aesthetically though, we kinda wanna be on board when we start because I can't go back and change it.
Right.
You know, and, I mean, we're not gonna tear apart the new stuff, you know, once we have it done.
Who do you work with on that, Tom? Is the CRA, have you guys been active on this plan, Gerald, or the?
Not yet.
But you will be, I guess you haven't been yet, but maybe you should be involved in it somewhat.
The CRA is the first person we go to on the TIF bond, you know, once that process starts.
Who is it that you go to?
CRA.
You do go to the CRA, so they'll have some input on?
I think legally it goes CRA, then it goes planning and zoning, and then it goes council, and then it goes back to the CRA.
So they don't have some input on what you do?
Yep, so no one can have, everybody have their input along the process.
What about trees and grass?
There again, depending on what you want, the, this lot is, is large, I mean, so the, the first building, there would be grass on the south end and on the north end, just because that, the second building will be on the other side, there'll be less, less area of long cotton wood, that would be green, but the parking will be in the middle. And, and my idea, which maybe is a drain, but if, if we get these two full and they work, if we go to do the lot to the north, then I would ask to change zoning on the lot to the north, you know, and then we would just drive down the middle. You know, Ninth Street, I think, is the street that goes along the south. That's where the entryway is gonna be between the two apartments, and then we'll just have people drive straight down to the next lot and build two more buildings. But, you know, I don't wanna, I don't, tonight, I, I, my goal is to get the one lot done, get two buildings done. But it, that is the, uh, when cottonwood is higher like that, if you come off of there to go to the east onto those lots, you have to build a driveway, and you take up a lot of the space of the lot, you know, just getting a vehicle down there at a general incline. You know, or look at where the Car Wash and Dollar General, how much space they putting in driveways there, you know, just to get in the lot. Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta, you gotta fairly, more of the better level as far as being level and?
But if we start on the south end, you know, then you put that Ninth Street in, and that's another thing that, uh, you know, we have to discuss is getting it paved on the, you know, if you're gonna do that when, uh, you're doing other paving in town, and if the CRA is gonna pay for that, or if I'm gonna pay for that, um, you know, just, you know, I'd only need to pave for the length of the lot or, or what, you know, the estimate is. You know, the last street I paid for in Wayne, you know, was about fifty grand, was the paving assessment, you know. But depends on how many square feet and, you know, there's a lot of, they should be able to tell you the cost. But, uh, I don't know, what other questions do you have, Larry?
Pretty much, um, just, so the parking is gonna be on the east side?
For the east one?
In between the, yes.
In between the two buildings.
One of the backs cottonwood, kinda?
Yeah, one will be backed up against the cottonwood, the west building.
Right.
Okay.
The other one will be on the east side of the lot line.
Okay.
So you come in, and then there'll be, uh, they'll come up to the apartment, and then there'll be a little driveway, then they'll, so there'll be two rows of cars in front of each, each building. You know, and then there'll be that middle driveway that'll come straight off Ninth Street, and, you know, from the, we'll come in from the south.
Are there plans for any garages? Just wanted to throw back.
No, I, uh, not the budget, um, you know, if people wanna pay seventy-five dollars for a garage a month, you know, we could build some, but, uh, I don't, I don't, uh, most of the time, they put stuff in them. They park in front of them, and they have storage in them, but, uh,
I don't think I got any more questions for you. For Jim, the city's responsibilities for a project like that, what do we have to do yet to get it ready out there, anything?
Bring electric in, uh, to the backside of it, which is down closer to Seventh Street, so set some transformers.
So we're coming from Seventh Street up a couple blocks to Ninth Street?
Not, well, probably in the middle of where it is the units are at.
Okay, so that would be our responsibility. Just electric, the sewer lines there?
Sewer and water is all there, gas is out front, so.
Okay. Okay, talk about that street, that's something we can talk about, but you're not under the impression you're paying for it, or we're paying for it, or who's paying for it, right?
I think I'm doing the TIF bond, and then, uh, then I would ask, you know, whether the CRA or some other group wants to help pay for the street. First, we figure out what it costs, you know, and if we can do it when you have one of the other projects in town, uh, that's probably the most economical, you know, is if their group is already here. You know, to have them come and do a short street, I think is, the cost is too high, um, you know, to have them just do a, it's a two hundred feet or three hundred feet, you know.
Two forty.
Yeah, so if they're doing the south end of Main Street or, I don't know, Lou, was it fifty-some dollars a foot for each half, or is that?
Oh, no, it's, uh, my last assessment on the street over there was, I think, eighty-five dollars or something.
Eighty-five dollars, what do you think?
For the half.
For the half.
You know, the, the other half would be on the other lot.
Right. Be on the other side.
Tom, are you, are you, you know, we, this guy mentioned, I think, before, and I threw it out there, do you really need to pave the whole block or just to get you to your driveway?
I don't have to go, I don't have to go the whole distance of the, uh,
Of Ninth Street?
Of the lot, you know, we don't have to go all the way to the storage units, I mean, that, that's a choice.
No, I don't think that was ever planned, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, or if you just go the length of the, of the lot, or if you just go to the driveway, uh, you know, just so, uh,
I would say to the lot line.
I think so too, something like that.
Yeah, that's what I was, that gives a reason to walk it down at this point, so.
Oh, Lord.
Two hundred and forty foot.
Well, it seems like the, I've been in the city council, you know, for a long time, but I've only been on for eleven years. And during that eleven years, the, the money came up where Wayne County had some dollars to help us pave Seventh Street out towards the forty acre industrial lot, and also towards the golf course. And Dixon County had, I think, five thousand or ten thousand dollars. And I, I voted in favor of that when I was told that we were never gonna do that again. I said, that would set a precedent. I said, every block that's been paved in Wayne County of Wakefield, all of those blocks have been paid for through a paving district. And we, that I, they, they told me that would be the only time they would do it, that's what I was promised. And since we did that, we've been involved in a lot of paving projects where we're paying the paving. And my argument would be, if you're gonna do that, maybe you need to make it retroactive and go back and pay all those people that bought their own streets. I know our greenhouse business bought a whole block of concrete and paid for it. And I really think that if, if you want that paved, that they form a paving district. Now, it'd be easy for you to form a paving district because the city would be responsible for the rest of that block, but I don't see why you would pave a part of a block and not pave the whole block if you really wanna think about what's gonna happen long-term out there. But I, I would, my argument there is that, hey, I was promised that that was not gonna set a precedent, that we would never pave another street in Wayne County where the city paid for it, or the CRA or anybody else, but you could use your TIF dollars there. But I think that that, if that needs to be paid, my personal opinion is that should be the property owner's involvement because it most certainly was with Eaton's Greenhouse, they paid for almost the whole block.
I think that would be a question we would like to have maybe answered before we, you know, go to prove this, who's gonna pay for that street? Before we vote on it next week, maybe we can have that discussion and, and get some figures for that street. Because, you know, you'd only pay for half of your side, and the city would have the other half.
I'd pay for the north half, yeah.
Yeah, that's my assumption, is that's gotta be part of Tom's budget, so.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I, Larry, that's.
We'd never talk about anything else with Tom, or we, we talked about it in length.
I, you know, I, I think we'd pave it for the length of my lot though. You know, and, cause then later on, if you sell the lot to the east, you know, or you decide how far you wanna go.
Well, I think we could pave the rest of it as long as you're willing to pay your half of the two hundred and fifty.
If it's front and back.
Maybe front and back.
Whatever he gets assessed, would get assessed normally, right?
Yeah, but I think that's a legitimate question, I think I, when I'm promised something as a councilman, that sways my vote, and then it's, it's, it's not followed, it irritates me. But anyway, I guess that's politics. Who else has questions for Tom? Val, you got any more questions?
Scott? I don't.
Larry, you got more? But I think, Tom, if Larry, you don't have any questions, I think that it's pretty favorable that they're gonna, the council will approve that on a week from tonight.
We would start the TIF bond right after that.
We could, and then if we decide like Larry would like to do it, it sounds like maybe others also, then we could start talking about changing those other two, and there wouldn't be a hurry on that. I mean, we don't have anybody that's ready to build on those, I don't think, right now.
But we need to get going on it.
Yeah, we could get going, but we could have a couple of months to get it done.
Because I, I am in favor of doing number three, if, if the council is in favor of doing one and two. Yep, now, immediately, in the process of rezoning.
Hopefully, we hear back from Dollar General.
Yeah, I, I would also just reiterate that I'd, I'd like to ask for the community's concern about our budget, about our commitment to a new dike, and about our commitment to a new filter plant. And, you know, if you've got more need for monies for workforce housing, we'll work with you. But I think that somebody else has to come up with some of the dollars because we just don't have it. I can remember when I've been on the city council, where we have an offer to raise, or a one percent raise to our employees. And that's a slap in the face when the cost of living is up three and a half percent, and we give them one percent because the budget is tight. So I think I can list a lot of things like that, that we need to be a little bit, uh, conservative as far as the budget over the next two years.
Just Terry and Gerald, you've been on the council, you know, we got a little filter plant down there.
Oh, yeah.
And you know?
The hope is that you can do a, a revenue bond on the, on the water system itself, or the water, but I don't know how that's gonna work.
We're, we're hoping we can, right?
I assume you can, I would sure.
Well, we got the city sales tax, you actually coming up too.
Yeah.
And the sale tax would be a, that would be a definitive decision by the community as to whether they wanna continue down this path or, because if they vote no, then the, uh, the sale, LB eight forty doesn't exist anymore, and we'll be in a little bit of a budget crutch, that's for sure.
I, I still think the utilities have to stand on their own merit, and if that means you, you do a revenue bond basis on the water project, and so be it, it is what it is, that's what any other town has to do.
We're gonna have to raise our water rates, we're looking at that.
Yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have another layer on top of whatever.
And that's not a favorable thing to do, I mean, that's, not gonna make us a lot of friends and the community, you know.
Well, you could do like Omaha, you know, they're gonna do two hundred million dollar.
Three.
The mayor's proposal.
Yeah, that's her proposal.
Well, let you guys, is there anything else, anybody, uh, we didn't, we don't have a mayor's public commentary, but does anybody in the, in this, I think we can ask him if they have any comments, anybody else? I think you've, because you've asked your questions.
Because the city's got a focus, I think, mainly, we got the dike down here is huge.
Yeah.
Plus our infrastructure, we got a whole filter plant, and look at our substation too, guys. That's old, twenty-seven years old, Jim.
Well, I'm looking down the road, but I talked to Brady about this, and I talked to Sean's there, he's got a picture, he says, well, that water last year was up within six inches of the dike, and he says that's an exaggeration, saying it was seven, or six, more than six inches, or even six inches. And Brady, you were out there, was it close to the top?
Yeah, it was hitting the bridge.
And I mean, we, we could be coming back in a couple of years, guys, and putting two or three more feet on top of that dike. Because the Corps of Engineers have that in their plan about five years ago, Scrivener, Pender, Wakefield, to raise the levy. And if they do that, we lose our walking trail, and I think we'd be looking at another high-budget situation, so. If there's no questions, councilmen, are you having more questions?
Thanks a lot for coming.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, Tom, thank you.
Thanks a lot of questions.
Yeah. It was a good meeting, and, uh, I think it's time to ask for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Val Beachet?
Yep.
Val, and then, and then Scott. All in favor, Larry?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
And Scott. Thanks, everybody. So if we can find that, we'll be ready to go, I think, but if we can't get something right, we're screwed. I hate to say that.